Regulations. So last summer, they adopted emergency regulations to control and share and allocate the amount of water that was in the Upper Russian River. And through last summer, they developed a more precise allocation tool that they're refining to use this summer. And so some of the lessons they learned last summer with managing a very small supply of water amongst a lot of users is that they needed better enforcement tools. And then they also needed better modeling tools to help allocate that water out as efficiently as possible. So they're working to correct those things. They expect to have approval of those emergency regulations probably before the end of May. And the allocation tool will be in place to help inform the decisions on how they curtail water rights. And we would like to likely see that some of the city's water rights will be curtailed this summer. I don't think that it'll be the same as last summer. I don't expect that. Last summer, all of the city's water rights were curtailed, but I suspect that some of those water rights will be curtailed and there will require some conservation. And then down here at the bottom, if you're curious about what the state board's doing, and you'd like more information, there's a website here at the Water Board's website. It's it's really focused on the Russian River and the drought period. You can Google Russian River drought webpage and you could find that. And there's a lot of information. So if you want to get into the details of what the emergency regulations are, you want to get into the detail what the allocation tool, water allocation tool is, you can do that as well. And there's a lot of other noticing there as well. So, next slide, please. So, how does this all boil down into what Heelsburg needs? Or what Heelsburg is using for water? And so this graphic here really demonstrates what the average or normal year water usage is. And so when we look at conservation, we're trying to find a normal year. So we're not just necessarily looking at the last year or a previous year, we're trying to find what is a good indication of a normal year for water usage. And what the region and the state board has found consensus on is they're trying to use the average of 2017 through 2019 as considered normal year or normal water demands. And so on these green bars that are shown on this graph, that's typically a normal year. And again, this is shown in acre feet. One of the things I want to point out on this graph is that you could see in the winter months, December through April, that the city's roughly around 100 acre feet. And then in the summer, we jump up to almost 250 acre feet. So we almost, we more than double the water demand in summer months. And you can really clearly kind of come to a conclusion that that's really outdoor irrigation that's driving that demand increase. And that's really unfortunate because our our demands more than double when we have the least amount of water. And so that's going to be an ongoing challenge for Heelsburg is that trying to find out how do we manage our outdoor irrigation? And be a little bit more efficient with that. The purple line here shows conservation from last year. And so you can see that, you know, generally that purple line up until May followed a normal demand cycle. Looks like it's pretty typical demands, maybe a little bit higher in April than it would have otherwise been, but probably had to do with a lack of rainfall in April and people wanting to protect their plants. But then you see in June and July, when we, the city really and the community really stepped up and met a very high level of conservation, you can see these really high drops in demand. And for most of the summer, the city was at 55 to 50% conservation levels, which is the best in the state. It was the highest conservation rate in the state. And so that's that's a, that's a big achievement for the city. But it's a, it's a, also, it's a very difficult thing to achieve and difficult thing to go through. And that's one of those things that we were trying to look for to how do we survive these drought years? Because we know there's going to be more drought years, but how do we survive those better? Looking forward to this summer, we expect and the governor has already requested us to reduce water consumption by 20%. So that yellow line is basically 20% less than the average and kind of shows where we're at comparative to a normal demand, but also where we're at from last summer. So it's quite a bit more water than last summer. But it's still less than what we would normally be able to divert. And then should situation get a little bit worse and we're asked to reduce a little bit more, say 30% in the peak of the summer, that red line indicates what that might look like. Still more water than what we had last summer. But less than what a normal year would be. And it really is, is looking in these, these months where we have heavy irrigation. And how can we reduce the amount of water that we're using for our outdoor irrigation? Or, or try to be more efficient with that outdoor irrigation? One of the things I would add to this is that we're trying to find ways to increase the supply so that, you know, in future years, we don't necessarily have to do such a drastic amount of conservation. But, but I do think it's it's reasonable to expect that in drought years, there's going to be sub level of conservation, whether that's 10% or that's 20% or that's 30% in a dry year when there's a limited amount of supply, there's, there's very, very likely going to be a need for conservation. What we want to try and avoid is delevel conservation that we went through last summer. Next slide, please. So what are we doing to improve our water supply to provide some resiliency during drought years? One of the, the projects in staff fields has the most promises to really look at groundwater wells with storage. And the concept here is that we would look at the aquifers below Heelsburg and we're looking at deep wells. These are, you know, 150 feet, 300 feet deep wells, getting into old aquifers. Using those aquifers as storage in the wintertime when there's excess flows. And then in the summertime, drawing on those aquifers to meet our, our water demands that are increasing during the summertime. One of the benefits of that is sustainable. So rather than continuing to draw upon an offer without replenishing it or drawing on the offer faster than it can naturally replenish itself, we would be actually injecting water into that offer to help sustain that long term. And again, we're looking at potentially producing, you know, 60 million gallons each year. And so what that equates to is the city uses in a, in a normal year, again, not a conservation year, but a normal year somewhere between 70 to 80 million gallons per month. So this is roughly about 6% or 8% of the city's need, but it would be a big benefit during these conservation years. You know, it would be basically the difference between a 30% and a 20% conservation level. Another project that we're looking at is a recycle water pipeline. So this is a pipeline that would go through the city and reach city parks such as Badger Park, the public schools such as the high school and some of the elementary schools, reach the golf course and the city cemetery. And really offset that water use with recycled water. So that water would then become available to the city for drinking water. We have received $7 million to fund this project. But the project is anticipated to be $14 million. So the difference there, we're trying to make up with federal grants. And so we've applied for several federal grants. But we're waiting to hear back from the federal government in regards to whether we've been approved with those grants or not. But the state has granted us this $7 million, which helps us to finish out the design work. And start potentially getting some of the groundwork or, or construction documents ready to go. So that we can get this project done as soon as possible. And, and again, this project would be about 40 million gallons, a little bit less than the groundwater offer storage wells, but still again, about 6% of cities annual water needs. So it's, it's a sizable project and it's another step in the direction of providing a more stable water supply for the city. The other measure that's kind of ongoing and will continue to be ongoing is conservation. So the city will have to on an ongoing basis, find cost effective means to balance supply and demand. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we just don't use water or we always have to take short showers. It means to be more efficient with how we use water. So installing low flow toilets or installing low flow showerheads or installing high efficiency appliances. So clothes washers that use less water than older clothes washers that are, are, are larger users of water. Looking at landscape and seeing what we can do to shrink our lawns and potentially use drought tolerant plants that don't take as much water during the summertime. And this really has to be an ongoing and long term goal for the city because it's really the most cost effective means to develop supply or, or get out of the supply constraints. The other option that we're working on too is the Dry Creek water right. And so the city has applied for an increased water right from Dry Creek. Dry Creek is again, seems to be a more stable supply of water. Because of Lake Sonoma and the flow regulations that Lake Sonoma provides to it. And so if the city can get approved for a water right at Dry Creek, it would provide a little bit more stability and, and when we can divert water. And so this water right, a Dry Creek would be a year round water right. It would produce a pretty significant amount of water as a backup supply really to what we have existing. The challenge with the Dry Creek water right again is that just like our, our existing water rights, it can be curtailed if there's a shortage of supply, but Dry Creek does seem to be a more stable water supply than the Russian River because of Lake Sonoma. So next slide, please. So with this, I put a lot of information out there about water supply, where our water comes from, rainfall, how our water demands are, are kind of cycled throughout the year, through the seasons. And talked about some of the projects that we're looking to develop to help supplement the city's water supply. But with that, I'd like to just kind of open it up to questions. So again, if, if you can use the raise your hand feature that will help. But in this zone fashion, I believe you also have your ability to unmute and ask a question, but looks like Matt has the question first. So Matt, I don't know if you can hear us. But I can't hear you. Okay, Matt, so maybe Matt will wait. And maybe move to Don Taylor.
Thank you, Terry. Good question. When you were talking about applying for federal grants, how much support are we getting from our legislators in Washington dealing with that issue?
So we, we've reached out to Jared Huffman's office and he's put us in contact with the US Bureau. As far as the grants that they have, again, the US Bureau has grants that are a 50% grant and a 50% match. We potentially could use that $7 million from the state as that match for the US Bureau. But we're also working through FEMA. So FEMA has a brick grant and they also has a housing mitigation grant. We've applied for both of those grants. But I'm not sure how much influence Jared Huffman has on those processes. I know at the state level, Mike McGuire and Assembly Member Wood have both been incredibly supportive of Heelsburg in getting state grants and trying to find ways for Heelsburg to find a, a more stable supply of water. And that, that I think some of that has resulted in us getting that $7 million grant from the state. But again, the federal process takes a little bit longer. But one of the advantages we do have is there's a lot of, a lot of money being put out there right now. So we probably have a pretty good chance of, of getting either one of those FEMA grants to help finish out the remainder of that project. We still don't have any funding for the groundwater wells. Which again, staff kind of feels like that's the, the, a primary target as far as a project, but we're still hopeful that the FEMA grants will come through and we'll be able to construct those groundwater wells.
Thank you.
Matt, you want to try and unmute and ask your question? So I'm, I'm still not hearing you, Matt. So, um, Matt, see, see if there's a way you can test your microphone. And then what we'll do is we'll move to Brian Gigan. So Brian, if you can come off mute and ask your question.
Yes, thank you, Terry. My question has to do with the groundwater storage concept. What does that look like in terms of increasing that resource? Or I know you were talking about maybe trying to get, get some additional wells, but I think the other part of it was actually sort of replenishing the aqua, that aquifer or what, what does that look like? I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, let me give a little bit more explanation. So the, the concept of the project that we have right now, and we've, we've hired a consultant and completed the feasibility study. And it looks like it's a feasible project. And what we would do is we would construct new wells up to three new wells throughout the city. And those would be deep groundwater wells. Our existing wells that are along the river, they range between 60 to 70 feet. It's fairly deep, but it's still drawing on surface water at 60 to 70 feet deep. These wells would go below that level, 150, 300 feet deep. And get into, you know, historic aquifers. And the intent there is that we can draw upon those aquifers for drinking water. But what we want to be able to do is have a sustainable project where in the winter months, when you have high flows in the river, like today is a day where there's high flows in the river and there's excess water that we potentially could divert that water, treat it, and then put it back into the aquifer, basically pump it underground and store it in the aquifer. And then later this summer, draw upon it again to meet our irrigation needs. And so that's a more sustainable program than just drawing on the aquifer itself. And so that's where we look at this aquifer storage and recovery wells. And that's, that's the project that probably has the most promise as far as flexibility and when we can use the water and how we can use the water, because that water can be used for drinking water, whereas a recycle water project can only be used for irrigation.
Thank you.
Welcome. So maybe we'll, we'll move to Lisa Demarest? Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Terry. So my question is, whilst all the options that you're sharing with us today are really commendable about increasing aquifers and creating the pipeline to use recycled water for schools and golf courses and things like that. I mean, it seems like those are a little bit more long term and that there's still funding missing and things like that. So are we all to solely rely singularly on conservation in the next, like this year and the following year? I mean, I have to admit, I, I haven't lived in Heelsburg a really long time, only five years, but last year just seemed so drastic and came upon us so quickly. You know, are there any other options for us to bring in water from other places? Or have there been other options discussed for the short term versus the long term?
Yeah, so you are correct. These, these projects that we're looking at are long term. Even, you know, getting approval for the water right is really expected to take another two years. And the only immediate solution that we have really is, is conservation. Now, what we are trying to do is we're trying to work regionally in partnership with Stoma Water to manage how they store water at Lake Mendocino. And, you know, really the key to our water supply is how much water is in Lake Mendocino. And so this year, they've been more aggressive than they were last year as far as holding back water, holding storage. And so the releases from Lake Mendocino are bad. I think they're roughly about this winter, about half of what they were last summer or last winter. And so that's helped to build the supply. And that's one thing we can do. The other thing we're doing is we're looking at, we have a backup water supply with Stoma Water that provides us some additional security in our water supply that came in really handy last year as far as, you know, limiting our, our restrictions. We're also working with regional partners to find ways that potentially we can share in this water rights, because the water right system right now works on a priority basis. So the last water right approved is the first water right curtailed. And what that does is curtail people fully, fully curtail them. Just depending on the year, what we're thinking about now is can we collectively as a region and work together and only partially curtail water rights? And that would lessen the pain. It doesn't necessarily, certainly resolve the issue always or completely, but it will potentially help lessen the amount of conservation. And again, I think in a normal year, you know, everything's fine. We move forward and we don't have a second thought about water. It's when we get into these dry years and drought years and we're asked to conserve that it gets painful. And last year is really an anomaly. It's a historic year. Historically low rainfall, historically low storage levels. It came on after a year that was also relatively low. And so last year should really be the anomaly of the outlier as far as conservation. What we would expect to be more typical in a dry year or a below average rainfall year would be the 20% reductions in usage. And again, really trying to look at outdoor water usage as what's the target there as far as what can we do to alleviate that? But again, these projects that we want to get online, we want to get them online as soon as we can. Because we do want to get that stability in our water supply and my staff is working as hard as I can to get that done. There's some financial constraints to that, right? There are some design and construction constraints to it as well that will take time, but we're hoping that we can get through this short term, you know, with as little pain as possible and then get into a better space once these projects are constructed. So, um, let's move to Melissa Kessler.
Yes, thank you. So what you just said about the last year was really an anomalous year. I mean, I think that's correct, but I think we're all concerned, given how radically things are changing, that it's actually not going to be an anomalous year. And that perhaps it's, it's going to become the norm really quickly. So I guess what I'm wondering is you mentioned these long term solutions that are being discussed. But they're not really long term. If we, if we're, if we're in this kind of extreme situation, so I guess my mind goes to what is the, the long term? Is it, is it bringing in pipelines of water or? I mean, I'm a property owner here, so I'm looking at the 20 or 30 year trajectory. Are we, are we looking at Lake Mendocino? Is that the main storage that we have? Is there, like, where, where Santa Rosa getting all the water? And I did come in late, so I'm sorry if I didn't, if you did discuss this, but I'm just kind of curious about if we really do get this extreme for, you know, 10, 15 years, what, what the bigger infrastructure questions and, and where is the water going to come from if it's not Lake Sonoma and the Russian River is really low?
Yeah, so we, we did discuss a little bit earlier, the, you know, the, the different water sheds. And so there's an Upper Russian River and there's a lower Russian River. And so the, the cut line is really below Heelsburg. Heelsburg is in the Upper Russian River because we, Heelsburg doesn't really get a large benefit from Lake Sonoma, whereas towns that are further south, the town of Windsor, the city of Santa Rosa and further on, they get a large benefit from Lake Sonoma and that multi-year storage of Lake Sonoma. Lake Sonoma is much, much larger reservoir than Lake Mendocino. Whereas, and so Lake Mendocino being a single year reservoir, it tends to cycle more dramatically with these dry years and wet years. And we do expect that as these future years come to us, that we're going to have more of these cycles of dry years and wet years, and we need to prepare for that. And certainly these, this projects will help mitigate, mitigate or limit the amount of conservation, but they won't fully eliminate the need for conservation. And so really, one of the longer term things that we need to look at is how are we using water? Like if we have acres of lawn that we're irrigating, we probably need to rethink that and figure out what, how else could we use that land, right? Is there a different way to irrigate it? Is there a different way to landscape that area? What are the options there? And again, indoor water usage tends to be pretty efficient. The building code helps to mandate that efficiency. And so that naturally turns over into less and less water used indoors. But again, there's some older homes in our community and those homes could be retrofitted. Appliances could be changed out to help use less water. But that conservation really long term in finding better ways of how we use the water and using our water more efficiently is really, I think, going to be at the top of the list for the next decade or so as our climate adjusts and changes. I, I don't know that there's an option there. I don't know that there's another supply of water that we can pipe in and not really look at how we're using our water. You know, if you start thinking around your area, that the only supply of water is Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino. And, you know, anybody further south of Marin County, they have certainly their own restrictions on water. So that's not really an option to pull water from Marin County and Lake County is a long ways away. So building a pipeline from there is not there. So really the water that we have within our watershed is what we need to find a way to live within that budget of what our water supply is. So next question, let's go to Pat M. So Pat, if you can.
Hi, yeah, I just unmuted. Hi, thanks. Yeah, you know, I think any of us with flumes and that have been working tremendously with numbers last year. But, you know, I, I'm trying to get a grip because I saw your line going across where, you know, what kind of our normal usage had been up there from 2017 on. So when we talk about the, you know, we may start out with 20% cuts or 30% cuts. I'm trying to understand what that 20 to 30% is a cut from. Because, you know, certainly you don't think, well, geez, if it's from the previous year, you know, none of us are going to be using water.
Exactly. So, and it, yeah, that's, that's a common question. But we're not trying to reduce 20% from last year's 50% reduction. That would be phenomenal if we could achieve that, but that's would be pretty painful too. So the, the 20% reduction is from an average or a normal year's usage. And so what we've tried to identify for the region is this average of usage from 2017 to 2019. 2020 was the COVID year, so that, that doesn't work for everybody. But most people can find at least one year within that period of 2017 to 2019 that they feel is a normal baseline for their usage. And then they would have the target there to try and reduce from 20% from there. And collectively, right, we should be able to see citywide at 20% reduction. So, yeah, so again, not, not asking for a reduction, another 20% on top of what you reduced last year. We're asking for a 20% from a normal year or a normal water use pattern.
Okay. And will there be any guidance given to, you know, what that may look like for household or, or is it just?
And we'll, we'll talk about the, the conservation restrictions that are in place right now. And really some, some of the tools or some of the areas that really can focus in on how to reduce that water usage in the summertime when, when water supplies are at their most restrictive point.
Okay. Yeah, I just meant in, in if we, we look at, you know, gallons per day type thing, that sort of guidance, how much, you know, we're looking at if we're doing a 20%. Can we pick anywhere on that timeline from 2017 to do our 20? That's what I'm, I'm just trying to get, you know, a feel for. So anyway.
Exactly. And it really, our goal is to work with people to find what's the right thing? What's the thing that works for them to conserve water? Everybody's a little bit different. Everybody has a little bit different needs. Again, usage patterns can be different. You know, maybe you moved into the city, you know, in, in 2018 and you don't have water usage history from 2017. Or maybe you moved homes between 2018 and 2019 and you don't have that new baseline for your new home. Those are common things and we're, we're really trying to work with people to find ways to be just efficient with the water. And if people find those, you know, methods that are efficient with water that work within their lifestyle. You know, I'm not saying that they're not going to have to give up something, but there, there's some change involved, but usually it's pretty modest, especially since the, the goal and the, the biggest need for conservation is during the summer months when outdoor irrigation is really the, the biggest driver, not so much the indoor water use.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. So let's, let's jump to Valerie White. Valerie, if you could come off, there you go. Perfect.
Okay, um, so, um, I guess I have a question about the city's actual. If the city is putting in any money towards drought resiliency, because the city has approved in the past, a lot of developments. So we're going to have more people living in our town with less water. And I guess I was naive when this all started last, when, you know, we had this emergency last year. I assumed that the city would be immediately I assume that the city would be immediately dedicating money from the city's budget to go into. For long term projects. And when the city council, we're working on the budget. The, see, the president. Of the city council was the only one that had water being his first priority. And there was one other council member who's, I think, when they listed their priority, their budget priorities. There were maybe five of them at the end that they were asked to say what their priorities were. One other board member had a city council member had it as the fifth priority. None of the other city council members had water as a priority. That's very disturbing to me, but maybe you can tell me, is the city dedicating any money? Towards our long term solution to our water problems?
So. Last year, with the recycle water hauling program, the city's general fund provided roughly $450,000 to help fund that effort. One of the challenges the city has is, you know, there's not an unlimited amount of funds to to move projects. Towards different directions and there seems to be a lot more need than there are dollars to meet those needs, but. The other challenge too is that with the reductions in. Water usage last year, there was a significant reduction in revenue. So we lost about. From our forecasted revenues that we would have gained to maintain system and do future projects, we lost about $1.2 million in our budget. Which is pretty significant hit. And requires us now to recover from that $1.2 million loss. Because of great conservation and that was exactly what the community needed to do at the time, but we had to recover from that $1.2 million loss. And then the city's funds, we can start to invest. In the city's water supply and really try and find a way to stabilize that water supply. So it's not so drastic from these dry years to wet years. It will take time, though, to do that.
Okay, I don't know if I understand totally, but is the city, I mean, that was the past money that they put in on the emergency basis. Is this the dedicating any other funds or saying we're not going to do project A right now? Because we have to put money into our long term water.
So so we've looked at our our capital improvement projects for water. And we've looked at, we've have on our books planned pipeline replacements, mainline water replacements. And we've had to carve those projects out, push them out to future years so that we can have funding to. Meet the grants that we're hoping to meet to match or, you know, so the city has this 25% grant match that we have to come up with. So we deferred. Mainline replacement projects such that we'll have that money available to affect these projects. So like the groundwater offer storage. Project. Our concept is that we're going to push out water main replacement up in Madonna Heights area. So that we can fund that groundwater. And again, you know, development, when new development comes in, it does increase usage, but they also pay. Demand charge. And so they pay a capacity fee to connect the city water system and we use those capacity fees to help. Fund other projects within the water. And so those passing fees will help to fund these water supply projects. Yeah, they won't fund them entirely, but they will help and contribute to the funding of those water supplier projects.
Thank you.
So let's jump to Richard. So if you could come off mute. And ask your question.
Me, how's that?
That is perfect.
Okay, a couple of really quick questions. Number one, what do we do about all the illegal marijuana in the Russian River Hills in the Mendocino County? It's taking all the water we could use in Healdsburg. And number two, what, how do you describe or? Explain the difference between what's released from Mendocino County? And doesn't arrive at Healdsburg in the river, other than maybe illegal irrigation at night in the valley. And thirdly, why didn't the city council decide to take a measly 450 grand out of that seven and a half million dollar grant? To provide water again for landscaping like they did last year.
Okay, so I'll take those questions in order. All good questions. So the marijuana grows, it's a little bit outside of the city's borders, but I I do know that state board is wrestling with. Illegal diversions throughout the state. It's not just a problem in the Russian River watershed, it's a problem throughout the North Coast. And they're working to ramp up enforcement and really track down on those illegal diversions. And then also for legal or permitted diversions for marijuana grows, they're also restricting those. And it's not necessarily in a time of short supply or short water storage. Marijuana is not considered a necessary use of water. And so they're pulling back those water rights for the marijuana grows. And so the state is really trying to work to manage that. Have they perfected it yet? No, absolutely not, but they are working to perfect that. The second question you asked was, you know, the difference in releases from Lake Mendocino. And what terms turns up down here in Healdsburg? And so if you're. Into watching the numbers, you can actually go online to a website called Sonoma One Rain. You can Google that and find that website and they will pop up a map that shows you the the real time flows in the Russian River from. Lake Mendocino all the way down to Jenner.
My source is that there's a major difference.
Yes.
Not showing up there.
Yes, and so last summer, there was somewhere between 80 to 100 cubic feet per second that was lost between Lake Mendocino and Healdsburg. And that's one of the things that the state board wrestled with, and that's one of the things the state board is trying to correct with their emergency regulations and their water allocation tool. And trying to better model that, but then also trying to have better enforcement. So you go back out and stop some of those illegal diversions. And. Again, there's some questions about, you know, if you have a well that's adjacent to the river. Is that a groundwater well that's permitted under Department of Water Resources, a completely different hand of the government? Versus what the city has is a surface water right that's managed under the state Water Resource Control Board, a completely different hand. And so.
That was proven years ago when they put red dye on the water up at Hopland and saw it come out of the sprinkler heads in Alexander Valley.
I I didn't know that they've done that, but that's that's one of the things that there's there's a certainly a claim that there's a hydrological connection with those groundwater wells and the Russian River, and there's certainly. An indication that there's a loss of water as it flows through the Alexander Valley. But that's one of the things that the state board is trying to wrestle with this summer to try and improve. Such that everybody is sharing in the water and nobody's getting a disproportionate. Share of water where else somebody else is getting that. And then. The third question you had was about funding. Can we use a portion of the $7 million to fund the recycle water project? So the state Department of Water Resources. Gave us that grant funding for a specific purpose and that purpose was for the recycle water pipeline. So we can't split that money out and use it for other projects. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like the last question we have is from Gail Bach. Thanks for being patient. So Gail, if you could come off mute.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Terry. The question, a couple of questions that I have is. Is number one, the recycled water program is the. Is the city going to continue with that for a fee? And then the second one, the 20% reduction is is that number 74 gallons per day per person? Because I'm another one of those persons that has the flume and and I'm the water police of of our house, so. If you can answer those two questions, that'd be great.
So the the first question, the recycle water program last year. Wildly popular program. Beyond staff's imagination, we really thought that we would only have, you know, 200 customers willing to go through that process. Of storing water and then hand delivering it throughout their property. We had well over 1,000 customers and it turned into a program where we had. Eight trucks running daily on city streets throughout there. And then it it was a pretty expensive program up in the 600 to. $700,000. This year with the loss of revenue from last year, the 1.2 million dollar loss, it's not something the city can afford to push forward. Also, we've had some staff leave the city and so we have fewer staff to help manage it. So what we've tried to do this year is. Work with the haulers that we had last year and other haulers that are willing to. Provide direct relationships with the customer that wants to recycle water. And the hauler and trying to have the customers that really would like to receive that water call around directly to those haulers and see. What they can do to set up pricing and. I think for some people it's worked out. I think certainly we've heard that there's a wide range in the pricing. The range of pricing ranges from $65 to over $100 per delivery. One of the things that we've suggested might help drive that price down is if you can. Partner with some of your neighbors or somebody that's close by and sharing the delivery costs. Because really, the the bulk of the cost is driving between the fill station and the the final delivery point. It's not so much the time spent on site filling the tank. So we're thinking that might help, but there is a list on the city's website of haulers that are willing to haul. There's actually a new company on there, some young kids that are. Trying to find a way to be entrepreneurial. So we suggest that people really look at those haulers, give them a phone call and see what they can work out directly with them as far as their needs this summer. But. Again. I would make the point that this year, the water supply is a little bit improved and we really expect that there is an ability to use. Your municipal water for irrigation. Now, we need to use it prudently and we need to use it restrictively, right? But there's still that ability to pull water from your hose bib and use that for irrigation. And that cuts down on some of the costs with paying for the recycle water, but also. Some of the wear and tear on the streets as well as some of those greenhouse gas emissions that come from those trucks driving around. And the second question you had was on water budget. So in stage two and stage three of the city's water ordinance, we don't assign a water budget. Again, what we're trying to look for is really, what was your historic usage? What was your average monthly usage, say, in 2019 and and try and find a 20% reduction from that? So if you were using 1,200 cubic feet in June of 2019, you would really, your target would be something less than 10. 100 cubic feet for the month of June. So with that, let's let's jump to Daniela Jones. Daniela, can you hear us?
There I go. Okay, thanks. Um, here, I'll let me just take myself. So. A couple of things. One, I around the water delivery I've called and it's per. Amount of water delivered. So even if both your neighbors want, if my neighbor, I want 500, they want 500, it's not going to, it's not going to go down. But if two people, it's per like 500 gallons or then there's another jump if it's more. But this way, now my question, this may be super naive, but there's a lot of chatter going on and about like. And and upset about the amount of development that's happening. With the water situation. And so I don't know if it's something you can speak to at all, but like. Why does that keep going? Why does it? We keep doing more development? And yet we have less, we we are restricted in our water supply. We don't have that much. So why are we continuing to develop when we are not getting more water?
So. That's a really difficult question and there's two two challenges, you know, when there's a water supply challenge, there's a housing challenge as well. Some of the development obviously is not, you know. There are some affordable housing components to these development projects. Yeah, agreed. And. We can see that. So there the affordable housing is one question that we need to address as well as water supply. Some of the challenges we have too is that these projects were permitted before. We got into last summer and the drastic water supply. These projects also look at a normal year, right? Under normal year conditions, what would the water supply for the city be? And that perspective is that there's plenty of water. So if the city could exercise its full water rights, we actually have more than. More than what we would need to meet the the growing development. And that's what the forecast is for the cities that, you know, in a 20 year forecast. Do we have enough water rights to meet our growing demand or forecast demand? And we do, but what happens is in these dry years, there's this need for conservation. And certainly, again, last year was a very, very difficult year. Because the water supply was so low, 100 year historic. Low rainfall results in very dramatic conservation levels. But again. In future dry years, we do expect that there's going to be conservation regardless of whether we build development or not, there's still going to be that need for for. Per conservation. Now, what what the city could consider is as as new developments come in, what can we do to potentially? Have them help support the new water supply projects, right? Financially support those new water supply projects, but also. What can the city do to require those new developments to be very efficient? And again, in that efficiency, be drought tolerant, right? So that they can survive. So. Outdoor landscaping for new developments is very restricted. They they can only have a small portion of their outdoor landscaping that's long. The rest needs to be drought tolerant and efficient waterski. Irrigation. Indoor, the the state's codes, building codes require high efficiency fixtures throughout. And so those are one of those things where development would kind of control and minimize the amount of water that they're using. But again. I'm not sure that there's a clear path where the city could deny. Development or stop development. City certainly choose the city council or the city planning commission could certainly choose what type of development they want to prove. But I don't know that there's a clear path. And again, this is a little bit outside of my realm.
Yeah.
You know, I'm a utility director. And the planning director sits right next to me, but I'm certainly not as knowledgeable on this stuff as he is, but. It is, it is a very challenging. And I think timely discussion to have about, you know, what do we do forward with how we use the water that's allocated to us? Because it is a finite amount. And we have to share it.
And probably this is not, you know, last summer is not going to be unusual, unfortunately.
That's, yeah, it really, if you look at the averages, it really last summer should not be the norm. It should not be something that we expect to see every five years, but certainly droughts every five years is something that we should expect to see and conservation every five years is something we expect to see. And so. Long term vision for, you know, property owners, people living in in Healdsburg will be to. Find out what's my means of dealing with drought in future years. How do I flex my water use? You know, back and forth based on what the supply is.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the next question we have is from Ward and Lisa.
Yes, hello. Yes, hello.
Yes.
Ward and Lisa, I I a couple of my, I have a couple of questions and one actually is regarding the the most recent conversation. I know this might sound. Dramatic, but shouldn't there be zero permits for new lawns of any size? Anywhere in that area or this area where there's a. How was a lawn take precedence over people having to pay? Extra money for their services or. Having to. Reduce our consumption. And I don't, I don't understand how a lawn is even something that somebody would allow to have. Planned at this point. And that might sound like a dumb question, but I I'm just trying to make a point.
No, no, it's a it's a really good question and, you know, and really, again, from the grass that we see in the demands that we see in a water usage, it's it's this outdoor irrigation that really drives our demand. At a time when we have the least amount of water. And so how do we control that? How do we shift our our landscaping throughout the community? And it's easy to start with new development because it's. It's it's the landscaping is not there yet, right? And so that's a good place to start. And, you know, the state has a water efficiency landscape ordinance and the city follows that ordinance to. Really restrict the amount of lawn that's there. Could the city adopt a new ordinance to further restrict that? There's potential there certainly. Um, there's potential there. Certainly, the planning commission has looked at this um in some of the recent uh planning approvals and asked people, why do you have lawns um at your facilities? Why are you not doing something that's more um drought resistant or water wise? Um, and and we, I've seen some of those developments come back and remove the lawns. You know, just just on understanding what the city's water supply issue is and that this lawn may not be something they can maintain long term. And I know that the school district's also looking at that question. You know, how do they maintain their playing fields versus maybe potentially putting in a a synthetic turf um to have that stability to go through these drought years? Um, so I think, I think lawns in general, you know, for new development is a great question. I think lawns in general for existing fields, parks, um, and and our front yards is, I think, a really good question of why do we continue to have those or why do we continue to try and maintain those in a climate that really doesn't support it?
Yeah, okay. Uh, all right. And then the other, I, we talked about Mendocino and we talked about um, the the tributaries, the the tributaries to the water we get here. Is Mendocino is is the, is there zero feasibility of taking a lake that has an average depth of forty five feet? Um, and then spending a couple of years while there is no water, digging it up so that we can increase the capacity? Cause isn't that, isn't a big part, if I understand correctly, isn't a big part of what Mendocino, how its losses capacity over the over the generations is sediment coming from upstream, right?
That that's my understanding. Um, you you know, the Lake Mendocino and the Coyote Dam, they're managed by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Snowmaw Water uh Agency. Um, a little bit outside of purview of the Heelsburg, but certainly we talk with them about those projects potentially raising the dam or dredging the dam and it it always comes back to a lot of questions about what's the environmental review or what's the environmental impact look like versus some other projects and and more commonly right now, people are focusing in on these aquifer storage and recovery wells. So really looking at the natural aquifers that are below Heelsburg and using that as our storage reservoir in these winter months and then drawing upon that storage in the summer months. And so, and that, I think that's also a more cost effective project as well. So that's really where the thinking has changed from expanding like Mendocino to really looking at aquifer storage as potentially a model. And and Snowmaw Water has also got a well, um, a large well down in Santa Rosa that they're looking to convert to aquifer storage as well.
Got it. So this is not part of a looking at a a well project. It sure would be nice if we could sink one of those big wells somewhere where we have a a floodland area.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're, we're hoping to do is that, you know, if we can develop a new well field down at Badger Park, that's, you know, deep um, and some other ones throughout the city, that will pretty much help um help stabilize the supply again. During a dry year, there's probably still a need to be wise about how we use our water, but um.
Yeah, even wells, they cost a lot of money to operate, they cost a lot of money, everything, everything about is more money.
Yeah, so yes, they do.
Cut in and out, did you guys talk about, um, is it going to impact us, the fact that PG&E gave up their their lease with the Eel River and that looks like it's not going to go through now? So we're not going to get diversions from the Eel River?
Yeah, so the Potter Valley Project, just to to give everybody kind of the same perspective, the Potter Valley Project diverts water from Lake Pillsbury and the Eel River into Lake Mendocino. And there's a a portion of that water that helps sustain the storage levels um throughout the year in Lake Mendocino. If that project goes away, there will be an impact on the Russian River watershed, period. There will be an impact and you will see uh more frequent drought years or more frequent dry years where there's potentially restrictions. And that's something that the city needs to on a long-term basis um plan against. Again,
Because right now, there's no, there's nothing in place.
So
Right, it it is lapsed and there is nothing in place to to ensure that there's going to be a diversion, correct?
Typically, what happens with the FERC license is the license expires and then the federal government will issue annual licenses until the project is either taken over by another party or is decommissioned. And so to decommission the Potter Valley Project um would likely require at least removal of one dam, if not two dams. The environmental studies on that will take many years. Um, and so there's there's really some expectation that the Potter Valley Project um will continue to operate on one-year license agreements for the next several years, maybe even the next ten years.
Okay.
So
No, is that the lawsuit right now, could that lawsuit in that, uh, could that shorten that period or?
Um, I, I don't, I really can't speak to the merits of that lawsuit, but um certainly the the FERC license that PG&E operates the plant on is has to be aware of and account for endangered species. So I'm not sure. I'm not sure, again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, not certainly not a uh hydro licensing lawyer at all. So I'm not sure if I can really speak on the merits of that. But that's certainly, there's a, there's a lawsuit out there. I don't know if it will immediately stop it. Again, it it's, it's not a simple thing to remove a dam. That's something you really want to think about how you're going to do that and what the impacts would be and how you mitigate against those impacts, right? Cause there's a lot of
Right.
Excuse me?
You're talking about the Coyote Dam, removing that dam, right?
Uh, no, not, not, not Lake Mendocino, not Coyote Dam. That would stay. It's the Scott Dam and the
I'm sorry, I was Pillsbury's dam.
Yes, Pillsbury. Yeah, that's, that's what they're talking about. And there's a lot of people like county that don't want to see that happen either though. So it's, it's a, it's a very challenging and complex issue. And again, those types of issues are going to go on for many years. It's something long-term that the city and everybody in the Russian River need to pay attention to. Because that is a a an adder to the city's water supply as well as anybody else on the Russian River.
Yes. So you're, you're planning on, um, if if nobody picks up the lease and nobody does anything, uh, it'll take ten PG&E about ten years to shut up their operations. But as we said, if something happens, it could be curtailed sooner. So is Heelsburg really taking that uh possibility into account when we're building towards the future and our water security?
Yeah, so the, some of the projects that we're working on, the recycle water pipeline, the groundwater wells, those things will help to account for the Potter Valley Project. The Dry Creek Water Right will also help to account for the Potter Valley Project. Um, you know, but that's one of the things that city is going to have to start to look for is that or really account for is that the Russian River is is a very cyclical and unpredictable supply of water, uh, where maybe in the past it was predictable, but over the next ten years, we don't see that as a very predictable uh supply of water from year to year. And we're going to have to find ways to supplement it. So the groundwater wells storing winter water in an aquifer locally and then drawing upon it in the, in the summer is a, is a solution. Recycle water is a a part of the solution. The Dry Creek Well uh of Dry Creek Water Rights is another part of that solution. Um, and then again, really looking at our outdoor irrigation and seeing like, okay, how do we become more efficient with that?
Okay.
But
So what you're saying before was, was talking about, you're talking about the same solutions to solve the problems we're already encountering on on low water years when we have uh the diversions from the Eel River. So
So we didn't last year have the diversions from the Eel River and that was part of the challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you heard you, honey.
Instead of someday thinking about uh outlawing lawns, it seems like we need to be a more aggressive on on taking care of those things. Cause it's not just drought years now. We're looking at in years, we have to not, we have to wean ourselves off the Eel River.
Yeah, and again, the Eel River is a portion of the supply that that feels like Mendocino, uh, not the entire portion of it. So but again, you know, we're, we're looking at the Potter Valley Project and we've been looking at the Potter Valley Project for the past three or four years in in accounting for that. And then these water supply projects, um, this helps to account for that Potter Valley Project. The Dry Creek Water Right, um, and the other projects that we're working on, it it helps to account for it. But again, that is something that city wants to watch because that timeline will speed up or exacerbate um the need for these projects if we don't get them constructed, right? So we do need to to watch that and follow. I do want to, I do have several more slides I want to get through and so
Go right ahead.
Through that. So, so let me, let me just jump through these slides. And again, we'll have another Q and A at the end of it, but um let me jump through the rest of these slides and then um get back to everybody's questions. Okay, so let's, let's move to the next slide, please. Um, so again, conservation measures, we've, we've talked about that a little bit through this question and answer. And so the governor right now, different than last year, the governor this year is requesting statewide a twenty percent reduction in water usage. And last year, everybody saw some differences in between the level of conservation throughout the state. Some people were conserving, conserving. Some people were not at all, but this will help um to levelize that a little bit if we can get a, a, you know, statewide twenty percent reduction in water usage. And Heelsburg currently, we're under stage two, which is a twenty percent reduction. So what does stage two mean as far as restrictions? So in general, a lot of this, I look at as somewhat constant uh common sense type of things, but really looking at your irrigation systems to inspect, repair those irrigation system, really preventing overspray and runoff. Uh, we don't need to water the sidewalks or the gutters. Um, but you know, sometimes when your system is going off at four AM in the morning, you're not paying attention to how much water is going down the street. Um, really looking at the city's uh conservation incentives and utilizing those. So we have conservation incentives for low full toilets, clothes washers, uh gray water systems, uh lawn conversions. So looking at those things and and seeing what you could do to participate in um making your home more efficient as far as water usage. Not using potable water to wash sidewalks, uh walkways, driveways, parking lots and other hard services. So this is again, a state requirement um right now. So use a potable water for washing of sidewalks is is considered a waste of water. Um, really should be using a boom broom or something else for that. Um, right now, construction and development, they need water for dust control, but we require them to haul their own recycled water to do that dust control or compaction work or whatever type of water they need for their onsite use. They have to haul recycled water. They can't use pot of water. Um, uh, we've looked at new swimming pools and and um back those off as far as we won't permit them unless they have a some other supply of water outside of the city's water supply. Typically, that's coming up from Santa Rosa from groundwater wells. Um, and then hotel and lodging businesses, they must post appropriate signages on top of their requirement to reduce twenty percent, just like everybody else. So they need to really provide that messaging to their um their guests and really give them that option and awareness that, you know, they don't need to wash their linens every single day. Um, but that they can use their towels more than once uh to save on water. And then again, just overall, um, you know, if you find a leak or break in your water system, trying to get that repaired within seventy-two hours, because that's just a a waste of water that's just running down someplace. So if you can find a leak or you you come across a leak in your irrigation system or in your plumbing system, trying to get that repaired at seventy-two hours. Um, next slide, please. So again, um, con, I want to really talk about conserving and reducing uh irrigation. And so right now we have in the stage two, these restrictions. So you can water Tuesday, Thursday and Saturdays, but other days of the week, you're not supposed to water. That's really to try and help minimize the amount of irrigation that's going on. Some people, it's very easy to overwater your landscape. Um, and so watering every other day or only three days a week really helps to prevent that overwatering. Um, and it's really a simple way to beat this twenty percent reduction um that we're asking. So and then during, again, during the summer months, when the water is least available, Heelsburg water use more than double. So we're really kind of focused in on this irrigation as this is probably the easiest place for us to gain um conservation. Um, so again, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturdays, those are the days. Um, irrigation cycles should be limited. Um, there's a concept of soaking and letting that water um rest and soak into the ground. So um irrigation cycles for lawns or overhead sprinklers really can be as low as three minutes. Um, some people let those go for ten, fifteen minutes, but after three to five minutes, um, that soil becomes saturated, that top layer soil is saturated and all that water starts to run off. So having shorter irrigation cycles tends to be more efficient use of water. And so really looking at those irrigation cycle times and cutting those back. And that goes for drip irrigation too. Some people will set their drip irrigation for twenty, thirty, forty minutes. Um, but it really doesn't need to go that long and and it it gets into a situation where you're potentially overwatering uh those plants. Um, and then again, routinely checking for runoff, overspray. Um, this is something that probably should be done on a monthly basis or for more frequently. This happens uh quite often, but again, watering the sidewalk is just a waste. Um, and all that water that's going down the drain is is just not benefiting anybody. Um, other methods to reduce water loss is mulch. So if you can put out fresh mulch each year, that can help keep that soil moisture intact and not lose it to evaporation. And then really um looking at your landscape and considering, you know, what a drought tolerant planting might look like and what a lawn conversion or, you know, shrinking the size of your lawn might look like. Um, not only for saving water, but just visually, you know, how would that um look? And some of these landscapes that are coming up with the drought tolerant plantings very, very attractive and very low maintenance. And so there's some pretty good benefits to really think, rethinking your outdoor landscaping. Um, next slide, please. So conservation rebates, again, we talked about this a little bit in the Q and A. So we do have, the city does have dollars that we will provide you if you replace your toilets or if you replace your clothes washer with a high efficiency clothes washer. We do have dollars for cromon conversions. Again, that is a a big saver of water. Um, the gray water systems, laundry landscape, um, that's also a a rebate or incentive that we have out there. And we're right now developing a rain capture system. Um, you know, and so hopefully that can be in place. Um, maybe some of the recycle water users can convert their storage tanks to rain capture systems and next summer or, you know, uh, through the winter, capture some of this rain and reuse it later on. Um, another good um tool for reducing your water uses is smart irrigation controllers. So irrigation controllers that have wifi connectivity that really respond back to you about how often you're watering um and give you that ease of uh inability to can, to change your controller irrigation cycle times as well as days of watering. And then again, we still have uh the self hauling of recycled water. So we still are providing free recycled water at the kiosk if you want to self haul that or if you want to contract directly with somebody to haul that water and use it. Um, next slide, please. So this is final slide and final questions. And so jump back into the questions for a little bit longer. Um, I know this has been a good topic and discussion point, but um I think we'll have to wrap things up around seven thirty. But Donna, you've been patiently waiting to ask your question. Um, what is it?
Am I being heard?
Yes, yes, you are.
Very good. Thank you. First of all, I couldn't see your second slideshow here. I don't know. It's because if I had my hand up, that affected that, but I couldn't see those slides. Uh, next thing is where do we find our historic usage for the twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen years? Um, as you know, our bills historically only give us a twelve-month history. Uh, next is I know we have six new stages of water conservation. Uh, the last time I went to go look for those on the city website, I had to dig through the twenty twenty water plan to find those. I'm hoping those are easily, more easily accessible, that information. Um, also, a per person gallon usage, when it gets down to the tighter uh conservation levels is a very easy way for everyone to understand what it is that they're allowed to use and uh especially for seniors and communication needs to be improved. I know you guys are short-staffed. But as a senior commissioner, I'm getting a lot of questions from folks, seniors and others of what's happening, where is it going on? And um people would like to see more information available to them other than just what is on social media or trying to keep up with changes on a website. So thank you very much for this meeting and um I'm finished.
Yeah, I I agree with your last point, Donna. The communication is key. Um, and that's one of the things, you know, being a little bit short-staffed right now, we're struggling with, but um, we're hoping to fill that position May second and hopefully through May, we'll start to ramp up the communication and improve that um and get it up to the level that we really want it to be. Um, you know, and as far as the senior commission and senior center, if there's a desire, you know, we could uh come out and actually have a a question and answer, you know, a brief presentation and quest question and answer. Um, and that's something we could coordinate with Mark um in honor really easily. So that's, if that's something that's necessary or feel like that would be helpful, I'm more than willing to to spend the time to do that. Um, so the six stages, so um just this Monday, um, it finally ended up in this, the updated It finally ended up in this, the updated municipal code. So if you go to the city's website under government, you can scroll down to where it says. Heelsburg Municipal Codes. And then if you go into the utility section and water section, it's listed there. I do plan on, again. To your point, communication is key here, trying to get that, that list of restrictions updated on our website. So it's a little bit easier to find. But again, I, I need to get the staff in here, May second to help me really kind of push that stuff out the door. And then as far as historic usage, one of the options that you have is you could call the utility billing department in the city. And we have that historic usage and we can send you a spreadsheet with that usage. And give you an indication of what potentially twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen might have looked like. Or if you have a particular year that you're looking for. We can pull that information up and email it to you in a spreadsheet. So hopefully that would be helpful. Because again. Does anybody remember what they were doing two years ago as far as paying their utility bill? I, I, I don't think that's a reasonable ask. And so. That would be a way to find that target for you. Matt, let's, let's try this again and see if we can hear your question. So you're off mute, Matt. Can you ask your question now? Yeah, we, we still can't hear you, Matt. Matt, maybe what you can do is, my email address is on the city website. It's T Crowley at Heelsburg.gov. If you just email me your question, I will respond back to you with the answers. And that goes for anybody that has follow up questions, T Crowley at Heelsburg.gov and just shoot me an email and I'll do my best to get an answer back to you promptly. Let's move to Jerry.
Hi, my question, I may have missed something because I came in a little late. Did you talk about whether our water rates are going to be raised this year? You know, based upon a graduated scale of usage.
So, so this year, and we talked about this at Monday night's council meeting, we do have a proposed water rate study. And it does increase water rates as well as wastewater rates. What's new in the rate study this year is during short supply. And times where there's a needed need for conservation, not just a voluntary conservation, but a true shortage of water supply and a need for conservation. There is a water surcharge included. And so that water surcharge is graduated as, you know, deeper we go into the stages. So stage two, three, four, five and six. Farther you go up into those stages, the higher that surcharge becomes. And, and really what that surcharge helps to do is helps to maintain the day to day operations of the water department because largely our costs are fixed. Not so much dependent on how much water we sell, but largely just continuing to maintain the pipes, storage tanks, wells, pumps. Treatment facilities, it's all fixed costs regardless of how much water we serve. And so it helps to maintain those, but it does also have the secondary benefit of really incentivizing high users to conserve. Because that surcharge will increase their bills. So to answer your question. I, I didn't hear your response. You're still on mute, Jerry. Okay, well, the, the one thing I will add to that is that it's planned for June twenty first to come back to council for final approval. Again, Monday night wasn't the approval of the water rate increase or the wastewater rate increase. It was a discussion to continue to move forward in the process to. Finalize those rates. And so it will come back to council on June twenty first. In a public hearing. And so if you have further comments or thoughts that you want to share with the council at that time. Mark it on your calendar. Let's move to Pat.
Hi, yeah, I, I just got a quick question. As you run like recycled lines for some of the city facilities and high schools and that. Is there any other thought about any residents being able to tap into recycled water lines?
So we've talked about it in the project, the original project really looks at. Providing water to the parks, golf course, cemetery and, and athletic fields. We talked about adding, you know, kiosks within the town so that if we did haul water again, we wouldn't have to drive so far to get that water. And we have, you know, internally had discussions about along the route, could we tap residents? One of the challenges we have with that is that there is a lot of administration that's required with the regional board to provide water to certain sites. So each year, we think we would have to provide a, a site license to that customer. And provide the education program about how you use recycled water, how to avoid cross connections with the recycled water. How to avoid that recycled water being overused or running into the storm drains. And we're, we're not sure how big of an administrative burden that might be. But it is something that internally we've thought about. The town of Windsor has done that in some of their neighborhoods. They have mixed feelings about it. One, they're, they're seeing that conservation component. But two, they also have that administrative burden on top of it with the annual renewals of permitting. Or, you know, the, the renewals of permitting as people move it in and out of the homes.
Okay, thank you.
So we're getting close to seven thirty. So let's go with the last question to Anne.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, yeah, I really, first of all, just want to say thank you so much for this town hall. I've been following this issue for. Many, many years. I've been a Heelsburg resident for about twelve years. So much appreciation to you for that. I am curious, what kind of ideas or incentives do you have for renters and for landlords? Because I'm a renter in my home and I'm very concerned about this issue, but there's only so many things. That I can do as a citizen. I mean, I recycled water program last year. The cost of it this year is a little bit outside of my budget. And I don't actually pay for my water, so I don't really know exactly what the water cost is. So I guess, one, I'm curious what the price of. Water, the recycled water program is comparative like by volume. To what I pay for it. But also, you know, what other maybe suggestions would you have, you know, I can't really buy energy efficient appliances. It's not my home, you know, things like that. So I'm curious if you've got some ideas and incentives on that front.
And so you bring up a really good question is, you know, in, in the rental space, how do we, the city, how do we promote and, and try to drive forward conservation? Certainly, we work with the, some of the affordable housing or low income housing sites and we've had a lot of success actually getting in there and. And, and installing some energy efficiencies as well as water conservation devices. We do have here at City Hall, free low flow showerheads, free faucet aerators. You know, I would imagine that you seem to be pretty savvy on conservation. So you may have already had those things installed in your home. But if not, we do have those free into anybody else here at City Hall. You come into the utility billing department and right next to the desk there. There's a bucket full of free conservation devices. Showerheads, aerators, other things in there that can help you save water. Sometimes having a conversation with your landlord about replacing toilets and, and explaining to them that there's a rebate for this that would help to offset the cost. And that the landlord who's paying your water bill is really benefiting in the savings on water, not only water, but the savings on wastewater for a toilet replacement. Maybe enough for them to want to do that, that upgrade. Some of the other more challenging ones are if you have like a shared laundry, trying to upgrade that laundry or clothes washers to something more efficient. Those, those, those are a little bit more difficult piece to landlords. It's quite a bit more money out of pocket for them, but. I think some of it starts with potentially using some of the free. Things that are available from the city, but then also maybe having that conversation with your landlord about, you know, potentially a toilet replacement. Because it's surprisingly over the year, how much that toilet would use. And then landscaping, that's, that's another difficult topic. But again, the landlord could benefit by, you know, reducing that lawn and we have an incentive for them. So maybe that conversation with the landlord. Could affect both a lawn conversion as well as a toilet replacement. And so with that, you know, we're past seven thirty, you know, I do really appreciate everybody taking the time out of their evenings. And joining me and asking really, really good questions. I hope that this was helpful for you. Understanding what the city's water supply, what the conservation needs are for the summer and potentially what some of your options are to help conserve water. And with that, I will close this discussion and maybe look forward to some emails from you. All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.